Who is their connection right now?
I think they've got a combination, because I remember I was, I counted them from, and they had to come with Mr. Robert.
Combination of wells, like there should be no wells in the city.
I'm not, I'm not sure that they are. I said I have to check on it. I know they have some water jobs.
Water checks. There are many water out there.
Okay, so they don't have, they're not currently have, they don't currently, or there doesn't exist a well, a water well in that property?
I can't say it's eighty-six acres and I haven't been on, but they want to, like you say, it's on the property.
They use the fire hydrant, if you want to know what they're using.
Thank you, and they have talked about the water through that system. Item four, discuss considering take action to approve Mayor Allen's appointment of Assistant PD, Volunteer Fire Department Fire Chief Reverend Bordeaux, a licensed independent contractor as Prairie View Fire Inspector for Panther Hill Apartments at $200 per inspection. What's Counselor's pleasure? Make a motion and we can discuss.
Do we have any documents? Mr. Mayor, since you put this on the agenda.
Actually Attorney Hayes was working on the agreement that me and Mr. Robert.
Actually, no. So you want to push it over?
It is going to affect the budget, but I think we have some other greater issues. We're asking to be, to ratify an appointment that is not even...
So I thought we needed additional documents to help walk through this process.
Well, this is, this is a position that, uh, it's Fire Chief Bordeaux was put in in 2016, and then it ended in 2017. So this is something that was ratified, documented, and all this other stuff, and voted on by you previously in 2016. So what else, what other documents do you need?
I was just asking, because I mean, whenever he was operating, you know, without Tyler, you said that there is no fire inspector in the city charter, so cease and desist because it's not there. So if we're going to approve him being a fire inspector, I would think that he needs to be there, because it mentioned that by you, to him, that it wasn't there, unfortunately.
Well, this is a position that has been voted on, that he's held before, so what's Counselor's pleasure?
I'll, I'll, I'll.
Okay, well, yes.
So in the document that you emailed, you said the city of Prairie View does not have a city fire inspector.
Hold up, let's, let's put a motion on the floor, and then we'll open up the discussion. That's the appropriate way, then you can make the motion, or the table, postpone it?
Mr. Mayor, I've moved the tables, considering and taking action on approving Mayor Allen's appointment of Assistant Fire Chief Bordeaux Bordeaux, a licensed independent contractor as Prairie View Inspector for Panther Hill Apartments, until we receive all subsequent information.
Okay, you've heard the motion, and it's been properly seconded. Councilor Johnson?
I've read it. But I have written the amendment that we postponed this until the city council changed the charter to add...
Can you change the charter?
Well, it would be, it would change the ordinance. Well, put our ordinance for us to have a fire inspector, so that we won't run into this thing.
Yes, so this is something, so JJ, this is something that we'll have to include into the, into the budgets. Attorney.
Oh, real quick, I, I guess my, I'm only seeing this, and maybe it's an oversight. This says Prairie View Fire Inspector for Panther Hill Apartments, as if he's not going to do anything else. So I guess I want to clarify what role this is, like, he doesn't just get one project, and so is this an oversight, or is this...
The duty can be extended, it was an emergency appointment, and this was a discussion, it was me and the chief, but again, we can, in the resolution, the resolution will take care of that.
So if not, it wasn't the intention to hire that, you know, fire inspector?
Yeah, yeah, that was, that was the intention, but this was, this emergency situation, and that's just how the document that Assistant Chief President Jimmy shared, and I was following that. But the resolution will rule, and we'll just have the resolution as the permanent, so no problem. That would, that would rectify that.
And just, I mean, right now, Chief Bordeaux is still, is still doing his job, because he's doing off temporary hire.
He's doing off an emergency appointment, that's how he's doing it.
So he's still getting paid for that. So, so how does this emergency appointment happen to, to, it's an emergency hire, but when we try to get an emergency meeting, it doesn't meet the same criteria, to do the same, to approve the same thing we're talking about?
Well, it helps if you read the state law, it's a lot different. So the mayor's ability to hire somebody on an emergency basis, and, and Counselor Hayes shared that very eloquently through you two weeks ago.
My, my argument is not about your ability to hire, my, my, my argument is about the purpose of... What's an emergency? If the emergency to hire Mr. Bordeaux for thirty days is specifically for the emergency that arise at Panther Hill, then that would make it an emergency for anything else to discuss the issues that we have. Now, the reason why I asked, and I made the motion, I don't, I think we should, like some of the councils addressed earlier, we've had an engineer to resign, and an attorney to resign. This letter comes from the mayor, and, and I'm trying to figure out what changed, Mr. Mayor. He says the city of Prairie View does not have a city fire inspector positioned in our court of ordinance or city charter. So do not use the title again in any of your communications, as it misrepresents that you were representing the city of Prairie View and acting in some official capacity. You are to cease and desist immediately. Can you explain to us that this, that statement that you gave of Mr. Bordeaux may the difference between now, when it's emergency? When we talked, and you said, you said you didn't want him, and you was going to use Mr. Lee from Veritas?
Where you talk, where you talk, you and I did not talk, so let's not...
Counsel, we talked, and you, we, we asked, because we asked for the scope of work for Veritas. You said you were going to use Veritas as, as the inspect, as the second party, which happened to be Mr. Lee, I didn't know Mr. Lee. I'm simply asking, and, and I don't...
Let me answer your question.
I'm, I'm still talking, Mr. Mayor. The, the email that you wrote to Mr. Bordeaux, that said that he need...
Hold on, Counsel, are we out of the scope, we have a motion on the floor.
The mo, this is about the motion, this is about the motion. And Mr. Bordeaux, and an email that you wrote, that told him to cease and desist in the same position, you're now telling him he could move forward in.
Okay, this is the, what's the question? I'm just discussing, there's a question, what's the question?
Mr. Mayor.
So I can answer it.
You asked, you told us that Veritas was doing both parts of the inspection. We said that was out of the scope of Veritas' original contract. You said we were using Veritas to do fire inspection. It's not until Veritas failed the project that you brought back in, Mr. Bordeaux, after the project, and said now you want him to be the city, the city fire inspector. In your email, you, in your email, you went as far as to illegally issue stop work orders on a city-approved development without any authorization to do so. These are things that you have in your email, that you, that you said. You, Veritas, this is you. Veritas is our contracted city inspector, broadly and prior to me becoming mayor, and like all plans on every project in the city, they have received the sprinkler plans, and per our normal process, will be the ones reviewing plans and inspecting, as they have done. That has not been, nor will not be, the function of your position that does not exist. Mr. Mayor, what has changed since your email about Mr. Bordeaux?
Are you done?
Yes.
Okay. Since then, Mr. Bordeaux has shared licenses I didn't really, as he had. I've been in touch with Eric Benson in Fort Worth, and Greg Hallmark, who all of the inspectors report to. Their ability to handle our situation has not been acceptable. And as the city's building official, it's my job to make those determinations, where, whether it's a house being built, or a project being built. When there's an issue, that's what I do, that is not what counsel does. You believe, okay? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Ayes aye.
Also, can I make a motion that we, uh...
No, you need to ask them to go first. Yes, sir.
Can I make a motion that we, uh, we put, we discuss, or discuss and take action on the, I guess, I mean, the fire, a fire inspector ordinance?
Oh, that would be for new business for next meeting, I think, is where you're going, right? Because we can't do it today, it's not posted.
Okay.
Okay, so yeah, first thing on new business, we post that for the next agenda, right? Okay.
Can we put a time on, can we put a date?
Mr. Mayor.
I, yes.
Can I say something right quick?
Yes, sir.
Mayor.
Well, he wouldn't need to debate a lot of motion, but it is pertinent to all that stuff you read. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor, Counsel, and members of the audience, basically, I just want to say two things. One, when it comes to the fire inspector, I would like to remove that title and take on the role as our marshal. Also, with the mayor and city council approval. Also, I want to just clear up something, I want everybody to know this. I am an independent contractor that was requested by Broadway Construction. They contacted the mayor, and asked the mayor if he could get in touch with me, because they would like for me to do the fire inspection. It was because of Mr. Herschel Lee, and I wish he was here, so that I would not be lying, and that he could, that he could testify to this. He did a inspection, uh, one of the items was not ready. They asked him if they could, if he could give them a couple of hours. He told them he could not wait, because he had to do something else, he had to leave. So they said, well, can you come back tomorrow? I have golf to do. Well, can you come back the next day? I got something else. He's a part-time fire inspector.
Wasn't Counselwoman Williams there?
I don't, I, I, was that for...
That's for August 3rd.
August 3rd, right, that, that is correct.
She was there.
And so, they, that's holding up the project. Me and the mayor has had our indifference. We have made up by apologizing to each other, and I have looked past that. I'm moving forward, I'm looking for the beautification of the city of Prairie View. I don't have time to hold grudges. My only job as an independent contractor, which I have a contract with Broadway Construction, is fire inspection. The city of Prairie View is not paying me to do this. I have a contract with Broadway Construction.
I have a question. If you have a contract, how can you, so, so two things, which is part of just the process.
Yes, sir.
When you're, you can't have a contract with Broadway Construction to sign off on a project that you're supposed to be representing the city of Prairie View. And it's not a fire marshal, it's a fire inspector, because you don't have a T-CLO to be a fire marshal. And so when I put on the agenda, when the mayor didn't want you, I put on the agenda two months ago to get you approved to be our fire inspector, when the mayor didn't want you to, it was for a fire inspector, and those were the points that the mayor brought out, of the only position that speaks to in our charter is a fire marshal. And so I want to hear this clarity, if Bro, we know that the, the, the outside company is supposed to, they pay for a service. So when you say out there, you know, you're the contractor, I'm, I'm hearing you, but when you say, we don't want you to say that, because people may see things differently, okay? If you're the fire inspector for the city of Prairie View, the city of Prairie View receives funds from Broadway Construction to pay for the inspection to take place. You're not an independent contractor for them, you're a contractor for the city of Prairie View. I want to make that very clear.
No, 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 you can't make it clear, because you just put it past, and you said we need an ordinance, that he couldn't do that, you can't say both things. You just finished saying he couldn't do it, now you're saying he's doing it. You need to decide which one it is. You just said we need an ordinance to discuss and take action to approve Mayor Allen's appointment, and it was tabled until we get the ordinance back and everything. So that is not happening, so now it's a moot point.
I don't, you confused me, but I...
I understand that.
I, I, I'm simply saying, since you allowed him to speak, the clarity of anyone of the process, that's why we couldn't find the money when we're in the budget meeting. The city, the, the contractor is supposed to write a check for the, to the city of Prairie View. Any engineer or anyone, Veritas, who is doing, actually doing the work, gets paid, paid a check from the city of Prairie View on behalf of that development. If Mr. Bordeaux, in your temporary employment for thirty days, emergency employment, only once, he can act in that capacity, and the question becomes, what do we do from there? And so, again, I don't think we're in, in a, in a greens. Again, two months ago, I had Mr. Bordeaux on the agenda to approve him to be the fire inspector, when you wrote you didn't want him. And so I'm simply saying, we, we just want to have a process on if we're going to have a fire, a, a city fire inspector, which is not in our charter or our ordinance. The only thing that speaks to it is a fire marshal, and you have to have a T-CLO certification, which he does not have, to be able to hold that position. So we need to figure out, that's what the ordinance and the conversation that counsel has talked about, to move forward on what move we need to do.
Right now, there's nothing to move forward on. We do not have Mr. Bordeaux, based on counsel's addressing item number four. So Mr. Bordeaux is not doing both things. Now, if counsel goes forward and does an ordinance, as you said you were going to do, and you say Mr. Bordeaux can't do it, then we have somebody else do it. But right now, it's not on the books, so it's a moot point.
Point, point of order. We've already, we've already closed on item number four, the agenda should be moved along.
Okay, item number five. Discuss considering take action on the proposed property tax rate of 2018. Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Okay, let me, yeah, and...
I'll, I'll wait, obviously, till Mr. Johnson's done, I just need to, there's some things we need to take care of when you're ready to consider the matter.
Right, I know we need a motion to set the rate.
Exactly.
Uh, two...
You're right, you have dates.
And set an adoption.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
I have a question. I believe in the past, when we, when we got ready to pass the tax rate, the tax rate was actually listed on the agenda, where, so when it was read into the record, so that when it goes into the open records, then citizens could go back and pull what was, what was passed for the tax rate. I'm just asking, if that's, if that's a conflict for us, or are we going to...
This is, this is the proposed tax rate. The one, I think the one you're talking about is the actual tax rate, after you've held the budget hearing, and you've made all the changes and adjustments.
Right, that's right. This, this is just the proposed tax rate.
Right, we're voting, we're voting what we're going to publish, right? It's proposed, but it's proposed until we vote on it, to put up the actual tax rate, so... I'm saying, the, the numbers should be listed on the agenda, I mean, that's, this isn't...
Well, no, you have to decide on the numbers tonight. See, you got to decide, you have to...
We don't know if we're going to propose the actual, the...
Yeah, so all of those, in the past, all of those numbers have been listed on the agenda, the proposed, the actual, the rollback, they all, and then we voted on which one we were going for. That way, when, when, when a citizen wants, if an adult tennis wants to go back and look at the agenda about what the tax rate was, they could just go and pull up the agenda to figure out what it was.
But Counsel, since it is posted, can we not read it into the record, then it will be...
That's what we'd like you to do tonight, is decide what it is, so you can actually publish it.
We have the, we have the, I think we have the paper, the dates, and all of them. We have the dates that we need to put in. He said we need to administer that.
Could I please make a chance?
Is it this one, JJ?
Yeah, yeah, remaining dates, no, no, I got that, you know, the proposed dates, the remaining dates. The one I gave out yesterday.
So we got the...
I gave that yesterday.
Yeah, I missed the calendar yesterday, but I don't think I have it yet.
Yeah, I gave remaining dates out yesterday. Okay, here we go. I, I had that yesterday, the remaining dates. I can get this thinking to make some more copies.
So I just need to, whoa, don't we just need to read the two dates in this?
Yes, sir.
Is that my list count?
What dates do we need to read in?
Yeah, let's see.
Oh, September 11th and September...
Yeah, you got it, yeah, the remaining dates.
September 11th?
Yeah, the following remaining dates, okay.
Okay, so we got to make them up.
Yeah. So what are we doing first? Do we get the rates first, or you want the dates first?
The motion to set the rate.
First, we need the, we need the language, because since it's not displayed on the agenda, we need the language to how the motion needs to sound to approve the...
Yeah, we just need the, a motion to approve the proposed tax rate for purposes of setting the hearings and giving notice. That's what, we're at the proposed level.
Then, what you have before you are the current tax rate, calculate the rollback rate. The rollback, the rollback rate is recovering the current year debt at 108% of last year's operating MNO taxes. You have defective rate. Defective rate is recovering last year's taxes at new, at the new year appraisal value. In this case, the rollback rate is less than the current rate. The rollback rate is .71063. The current rate is .73049. The effective rate is .67559. And effective rate is the lowest one, because the definition of effective rate is recovering last year's taxes at the new year appraisal value. So basically, it's keeping your taxes at the same rate, so that's why it's the lowest value. You guys can also, go ahead.
Okay, Counsel, do we need to make the motion on, I mean, I know we got three.
They'll make the motion on which rate then.
Yeah, and, and you're not quite done yet, right?
No, what, I'm not quite done. The, the other thing that counsel can consider is raising the rate. You can also consider raising the rate. So that's, that's the choices that you all have for discussion. You need to know that. Yeah, but you need to know that, as counsel say, you need to know that.
So speak on the dates, what do we have to say as far as dates?
Well, no, let's do the rate first. You need to decide on the rate first.
So we vote on the rate, and then we...
Yeah, then we do the date, yeah.
This is not the final rate, this is just to tell the world.
The whole rate, how it works.
I'm just making sure that, I understand that we just, I'm just making sure that two-step motion, that we don't vote on the rate, and then...
The motion, you need a motion to set the proposed tax rate for purposes of giving notice of the hearings, and, and that on the dates you're about to establish. So you're going to put it at a certain date, a certain date, and then another date, you're going to actually consider the budget. And you just need to have what you're told all the citizens is going to be, the proposed tax rate. So you just need a motion to set the proposed tax rate at...
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Allen, I move that we set the 2018, 2019 proposed tax rate at the current rate of 0.73049.
Second. Okay, so we probably moved in second, and we set the current tax rate at 0.73049. You heard the motion, ready for the questions?
Yeah.
Question?
Point. 0.73049.
0.73049.
Right, okay. The current, the current. Oh, it's, can we say this one more time for the city secretary?
Sure.
The number?
Yes, please.
You heard the motion, ready for the question?
Question.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Let the record reflect as unanimous.
Okay, the dates for the property tax hearings should be September 11th and September 20th.
Property tax hearings?
Yes.
So that's who we're going on now, September the 11th and 20th?
11th and September 20th. Here at the city hall, you set a time, and I guess, um, at 6:00 P.M. We have to set a time and, and a place.
Why did we pick those dates?
Well, those fall within the, the dates that are required by the state.
Well, we have a city council meeting on the 10th, so it had to be different.
No, these are different, and this is different right here.
Yeah, these are public hearing dates.
These are public, these are public hearings.
You couldn't have, have it for, you can have it for the city council meeting, like with five.
No, not these, I have, they have to be so many days, and this is meeting, and this was passed by the attorney. This, and plus, we got to focus everything, this meets the state requirements here.
So we move to a date. Yes, but we, what is going to end up happening if we don't change these dates? There's not going to be enough people to have the meeting.
We don't have to...
We don't need a quorum of a public hearing, is that right?
No, it's just a hearing. This is a public hearing.
So to open, well, you need three.
Not for, it's a public hearing.
You're just sharing information.
It's a public hearing, so we got, this has to be, we have to do this to meet all the state requirements.
So you can levy the taxes.
That's right.
Right, but I'm saying, even before you get to that, in our, you know, what's, maybe, tells, we used to have four, but in our ordinance, it says we need to have three for a public hearing. I mean, for, for a workshop, and then if you talk about even doing a special meeting, you got to have four. So if it doesn't qualify, then that, that's fine.
That's right.
I just, okay.
Okay, what's Counselor's?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Allen.
I move that we approve setting a property tax hearing for September 11th and September 20th at city hall at 6:00 P.M.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second, and we set a property tax hearing at September 11th and 20th at city hall. You heard the motion, ready for the question?
Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Probably set the same right? Ayes aye.
Mayor, your last item is to set the date for the budget, the budget hearing itself. Okay, for the adoption of the budget.
Yeah, right, okay.
So are we going to, are we now for sure that we don't have to have a quorum?
For the public hearing, the council will decide to hear it.
It's, that will, I mean, when you adopt the budget, you adopt the budget, that's going to be an act of the city council, so that has to be a date, not when you're here.
Okay, the dates, the dates for the adoption, the dates for the adoption to approve the property tax rate and the budget will be the date for the council meeting on September 24th. We will have the, we will have the, the four, the four, the proposed, the proposed budget, we'll have a hearing, the budget hearing will be on September 24th, prior to council meeting, the hearing.
5:00 P.M.?
Pardon me?
5:00 P.M.?
Yeah, 5:00 P.M., right.
But I thought you said the hearing was the 11th and the 20th?
No, no, that's the budget, that's the budget.
Adopt the budget.
So you got to have a public hearing on the budget.
And then we, so it's twice, so it's 5:00 o'clock, and then it's our regular meeting, when we approve.
And that's when you approve it, exactly.
Okay, so adopt the, the 24th at 5:00 P.M.?
Yeah, that's a public hearing on the budget.
Okay, Counsel.
And then you can levy the tax, but you cannot levy the tax until you've approved the budget, because taxes have to be levied in accordance with the budget.
We do, as far as a quorum, we need it for both meetings, or just one?
We need it for the action of approving the budget.
Which tax for the city council?
Right, y'all need to be here, right. So, and then we do, and then after we do the budget, then you approve the property tax rate.
Right, we do the same meeting, city council.
Right, so we're going to approve the property tax rate at the city council meeting.
Right, in the same meeting that we approved the budget.
Yeah, and then, okay, we're going to have a public hearing at five o'clock.
Yeah, okay.
And then, and then we go in the city council meeting, that's when we approve the property tax rate and the budget.
Right, right, so do we need to, we need to set, we need action to set the public hearing for?
Yeah, now we need to set the public hearing, right.
But we don't have.
Because that's going, that's going in the publication in the paper, I need that tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Rando.
I move that we set a day for the adoption of the proposed budget for September twenty fourth at five P M at city hall.
You got the public hearing. Should be called the budget public hearing. He says adoption of the budget should be.
The budget, the budget public hearing.
There you go, right.
To, uh, to, to adopt the proposed, or the public hearing about the proposed budget, September twenty fourth at five P M.
I move your prior ones, okay? Okay, as we properly moved the second at, at September twenty fourth at five P M, uh, for the adoption, for the public hearing on the budget.
On the budget, right.
At Prairie View City Hall. Heard the motion, ready for the questions?
Questions.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, item six, discuss the city's contract with Bear Veritas, Counsel Wallace.
Uh, Mr. Dickey, do we have, uh, a file of the Bear Veritas contract, uh, at city hall?
I have not seen a copy of the contract.
You want to pass it on and we'll, we'll put that out of contract. I have a. You want to make a motion under the issue? Yes.
I need to be tabled, it's been a question about the contract.
Second. As we properly moved this in table that we table item number six on Bear Veritas contract until we have a complete contract. You heard the motion? Unreadiness? Uh, or we going to do the contract across? So, I, I will say that we put a date, September tenth on there, is that friendly agreement? And then, so we would request for, for part of, in my unreadiness, and I, and I just, hopefully this doesn't come out wrong. Any contracts that belong, that are, that the city of Prairie View has, that we are requesting in information a month, a week, or two weeks in advance, three weeks in advance, four weeks in advance. We would hope that this action will take place out of the mayor's office. So we don't have to continue to come through this time after time after time. So, Mr. Mayor, I, we, we haven't had this conversation. And so that we hope that when we put, when we want to look at contracts, when we want to look at things, that when, um, the city secretary who prepares the agenda and prepares the minutes, that when we say we need to look at a contract, the official record keeper of the city is the city secretary, so she should have that contract in our packet for when we request it. And it's the mayor's responsibility, since he's operating the city, to make sure we.